Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Bennington Select Board, Monday, November 11th, 2013. Bennington Park Facility, time now 6:00 p.m. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States. When one nation comes down, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we've got two sets of meetings, even though your agenda only talks about one, because at our last meeting, we did not have a majority to vote on the minutes from October 14th. So we'll take those minutes first, minutes from October 14th.
I'll move to accept those as printed.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And a second, any discussion? And at that meeting, we had six of us present and one abstention. So all in favor, and that's six, four. Any abstentions? One. Okay, next is the minutes from October 28th, our last meeting.
I'll move they be accepted as printed.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, all in favor? And that's four. All against? None? All those abstain? Three. So the motion passes, minutes pass. Next item on the agenda are the warrants, and we'll start with you, John. Any issues on a warrant?
I don't.
Justin?
I don't have anything to talk about.
Jim?
No, sir.
Tom?
I haven't got any comments.
Greg, no.
Nothing at all.
No, they don't have anything.
Okay. Stuart, I just see some agency funding. Is this the first round for the library, or is this total for the library?
This, let's see, November, this would probably be the second payment of three.
Okay. And then I saw a lot of, for the payment we done, that we wrote checks for, will that just about clean up all the work we did this summer?
That is my belief.
Okay.
We pay those as they come in, so it's really up to the vendor to make sure that they're all in.
Okay, fine. All right, next item on the agenda, citizens. Mary, I understand you have something you want to say?
I do. And...
Sit right down there. This is for items that are not on our agenda.
Yes, and this is, this is an item for the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless. I would like to make it known to everybody that the annual meeting of the Board of Directors and of the organization will be held on November 20th at St. Peter's Church in the parish hall at 6:00 p.m., and the public is invited and encouraged to attend so they can hear what great progress the organization has made in the past year. Thank you.
Mary, is there a point of contact at the homeless center that they can get a hold of, they have any questions?
Yes, there is. They could call, well, they could call either myself or Stacy New, and why don't I give my phone number, because I haven't asked her permission to give hers, which is 802-379-6311, or they could stop into the office, which is now located at 250 North Street, right next to Hawkins House.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Any other citizen like to speak to anything that's not on our agenda tonight? Come up, please. Introduce yourself, sir. You have to come up to the microphone so the folks at home can hear you and see you. You go ahead and sit right there.
My name is Chad Reed, and I'm here to talk about the wrestling signs on entrances of Bennington.
Okay.
Good evening. As many may know, our local wrestling program has accomplished a lot over the past 25 years. During this span, they have won a national record 25 consecutive state titles and seven New England titles. This past spring, the program was recognized for their achievements, four signs that would be placed at each main entrance into Bennington, I believe it was, in this room. This community supports the wrestling program, whether it be through fundraising, packing the gym for home matches, cheering on these young men and women. That's why so many of us were appalled when we found out on Friday that a member of the Vermont Agency of Transportation saw the sign entering Bennington from Woodford and said the sign was not compliant and needed to be removed as soon as possible from their right-of-way, and school grounds would be a better place for them. These signs represent the young men and women that have trained year-round and dedicated blood, sweat, and tears to this program, signs that represent our community and its support. What can we do to help? Do we need to apply for a permit? We are here tonight to ask the board for help resolving this matter and to keep these signs where they belong.
Stuart, do we know about that?
Yeah, we know about that. Yes. I received the email from the District One offices. I sent it on to Scott Legacy, the coach of the wrestling team, letting him know that, and I included the law with it, that they had quoted to us, that the signs in the state highway right-of-way are not legal, unfortunately, under Vermont law. And so I let Scott know that we were going to have to remove them, we would preserve them, just in case there was some other way to exhibit them, but they are not considered legal under Vermont law.
Stuart, I've got a question for you. You and I talked about this on Friday, because I got notified by Scott. Is it a ban of any kind of size, a sign? Could it be made smaller and kept in the same place?
No, Vermont law, because of the billboard, the billboard ban years and years ago, signs that can be placed in a state highway right-of-way can only be municipal signs that provide direction, provide notice to people of speed limits, those kinds of things, or signs put up by the state. And those signs that are allowed by the state tend to be directional signs that direct you to a business who has paid to have that service. Unfortunately, these signs do not comply with the state law, and...
And putting that adjacent to that area would be illegal as well?
Well, remember, I mean, we could place them outside the state highway right-of-way, and they would be all right, but then we've got to get the permission of the landowners where they're going to be, and the signs are relatively small. They're not really made to be seen from outside the highway right-of-way. They'd have to be so far off the right-of-way that I'm not sure they would be effective.
Were there, they were an entrance to the town in each direction, in all four directions, is that...
Yes. I'm not sure there was one on the south. I'm not sure we ever got to that, but there might have been.
But as long as it wasn't on a state highway, we could display them?
That's a good question, and whether or not the state highway right-of-way, because it's Route 9 and Route 7, which are considered interstates, we may have to get permission from the state to place them even inside the, what, the former village limits.
One thing I'm just thinking, it just kind of pops into my mind, heading north from the south, is what if we were able to display it on the, you know, our building, the blacksmith's shop, and somewhere in that area? That would still be on the major, on the highway, it'd be visible, but it's our property.
As long as it's out of the right-of-way, I don't think there'd be an issue.
I think I get the Board of Trustees' veterans, so I'll give permission to put it on the other side, too, on our land. Where are the signs physically right now?
One is...
Do we have them? Do we have a...
I don't, I'm not sure we've even removed them yet.
That they're not removed yet, no.
Was there a timeline in the notice?
It was immediately.
Okay, that's, we got time then.
Be transparent, that's about six months.
Yeah. If there was an arrow added to these current signs saying this way to the high school with 25 years of...
Might not cut it.
Stop and see the wrestling team.
No, I mean, I think, I think, Joe, you raise a good point, I think Justin raises a good point. If we can locate, perhaps, working together with the folks who support the wrestling team, ideal locations for these signs that would still be visible from the traveled way, but not in the state highway right-of-way, we'll work with them to put them there.
Because they can't say anything if they're on private property.
That's right.
That's right.
Joanne, we're going to put a sign, I think we're going to put a sign in front of your office here on...
I was just going to suggest, I'm happy to have one in my building.
Yes.
There, the information key is in my building, but I'm not sure what the sign looks like, but maybe...
It's not that big, really.
One of the inside the walk-in set of the highway.
Right.
So there's... They're a regular street-size, street sign.
No, I'll take the first...
And we have to be careful with the chamber property, because it's owned by the state. Right. The chamber, where the chamber is located, is owned by the state. I know, this, the building is yours, but I'm familiar with the lease.
I cannot put any advertising outside. Whether it's, no, nothing, in my 44-page contract, that designates it, I can't put a sign up for our wrestling team inside.
I think if we can work together, we'll, we'll find a way to make sure we preserve them and get them out there.
And there's a target opportunity Wednesday at the Welcome Center, at 12 o'clock.
Not to the visiting, but also to the...
I suggest that some wrestlers be at the, if you're not doing anything, at 11, or noon on, noon, right?
Yeah, be up there by noon.
Noon on Wednesday.
Bring a sign.
There's a guy called the Governor of the State's going to be here, and I know he's proud of the wrestling team here in Bennington. I'll just mention, we got a problem. But I'll tell you, when I was in the legislature, I was on Natural Resources, who, we tried to get around that law for a number of businesses, it's tough, and it was because, as Stuart said, it goes back to the billboard law, goes back forty-seven years ago, to do that. But I think we can work it out somehow.
We'll find a way.
We'll find a way. All right.
Great, appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Any other citizens? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the ordinance, Article 17, improper use of public way and abatement of public nuisances. Now, we did not vote on this in the last meeting, because I had three members of the board absent, and I thought we'd let it go, and I know we have some more citizens that want to talk about it today, so we'll go ahead, this is for the third time we've discussed this. So any citizens out there that like to talk about Article 17, improper use of public way, abatement of public nuisance? Anybody want to talk? Mary?
Yes.
Mary, please take their, and please state your name.
Yes. I'm Mary Garrish. I live here in Bennington, and I'm active in many different organizations, including the Coalition for the Homeless, and the Kitchen Cupboard Food Pantry, and the Interfaith Council. I'm speaking for myself today, and also on behalf of the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless. I have an objection to the whole concept of this ordinance, because I feel that we are a community, and as a community, we should be able to ask our neighbors for help if we need it. I understand that there are some merchants that have had objections, and I would love to know how frequent this problem of the same people usually is. I think there are alternative solutions to getting them involved with the law. That being said, and apart from that whole philosophical objection, I really object to the language of this law, and I think that most people aren't aware that, for example, the public place, the way it's defined in this law, says, "Public place shall mean a place where a government entity has title to, or which the public or a substantial group of persons has access, including but not limited to street, highway, parking lot, plaza, transportation structure, facility or vehicle, school, place of amusement, park, playground or sidewalk, or doorways or entrances to buildings, dwellings, or grounds." Now, that means that it's not just government property you're prohibiting this on, you're prohibiting this on any property where there is large public access, which includes any parking lot, whether it's owned by a store or not. Also, I would point out that in your definitional section, on aggressive manner, which is F1, you say approaching or speaking to a person, you don't say a person you don't know. Therefore, if someone is walking down the street with their friend, and they ask their friend for something, technically, that's a violation of this ordinance. And anytime that there's an ordinance that is so overly broad, it is subject to abuse depending upon the persons who are perceived as violating it. I also think what we're doing with an ordinance like this is trying to sanitize our community, and I think that it also applies to things that we probably didn't mean it to apply to. When we talk about soliciting for money or objects of value in a public place, I'd like to point out some examples that would fall within the parameters of this ordinance. The Salvation Army bell ringers and Santas that are there every year, unless you create a special exemption or a permit for them. Cub Scout, Boy Scout, and Girl Scout troops who solicit donations in public places. Sports teams from our local schools who solicit donations, and I could go on, but you get the idea, I'm sure. So I think that this is overly broad, and I also think it's totally violative of the First Amendment. I mean, it talks about not only speech to anyone, not just people you don't know, it talks about signs, it talks about hand gestures, it talks about, and this one concerns me, because I have a very loud voice, speaking in a loud voice that's not ordinary under the cir, or loud, let me, let me quote it, "Speaking in a volume unreasonably loud, under the circumstances." So for me, that could be just about any time, but just saying. And one of the things that really bothers me the most, and this is where I'm speaking not only as a private citizen, but also as a member of the board of the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless, is that what has been slipped into this ordinance, which has nothing to do with panhandling and which has not been publicized, is Section H, which says, "No vehicle parked on a public street, highway, sidewalk, or other public place," and that public place is defined as the definition that we read earlier, "shall be used for the purpose of sleeping." This section shall not apply to persons traveling through Bennington, sleeping in their vehicles for no more than one night. Now, this is clearly aimed at those homeless members of our community who, when the shelter is full, or maybe because they have a dog, have nowhere else to sleep but their vehicle. I find this to be an attempt to legislate against homelessness. I find it offensive both personally, morally, and certainly legally, and I'm asking you to reconsider putting anything like that in there. Some of our homeless members of our community have nowhere else to sleep when it's cold outside, and I know there are safety nets. I'm painfully aware that our shelters cannot possibly hold the number of homeless persons who sleep in cars or under bridges, and they're just lucky if they find a car or a motor vehicle to sleep in when it gets very cold out, and we're coming up on that season. So I would encourage you to do several things. A, to allow this ordinance to be discussed publicly at a public hearing prior to adoption. B, if you're not going to do that, or maybe even if you are going to do that, and it winds up passing, submit it to the town for a vote, and see what the town itself thinks about this kind of legislation. Thank you.
Mary, yesterday, I listened to your, your performance on CAT TV.
Right.
You came up with some other alternatives.
I did.
Why don't you mention some of those?
I would love to. We had talked, and Joanne was there, too, and, and we were all talking about the possibility of a crisis intervention team, because what we're frequently talking about here are folks, and, and I have to say, I don't drive, so I walk everywhere, and I am out and about almost every day of the week, and I don't see this. Now, maybe I'm not going to the place where it happens, but I don't see it in the downtown area, other than maybe once or twice since I've moved here. But that being said, if there is someone who has a substance abuse issue, or a mental health issue, or both, first of all, this ordinance is not going to solve the problem of them being there, because, A, they may not even understand that they're violating an ordinance. Getting the police involved is probably not the solution. They'll never be able to pay a fine, so then what? Do they go to jail? So it would be, I think, better and healthier for us, as a caring, compassionate community, to try and treat those persons with dignity and put together a crisis team, which, and apparently, apparently, we're talking about just the downtown area here, although the ordinance doesn't say that, but that's what my understanding is of where the problem is. And if we could put together some people from faith communities, mental health places, health places, social workers, who would be willing to take a shift to be on call if a merchant experienced this problem, I mean, it's not going to be far for them to come, because the downtown area is right there. I don't know if that's possible, I haven't really, we just sort of came up with it brainstorming on CAT TV the other day, so it's not something I've really looked into, but that's the sort of approach I would encourage you to take, because one of the reasons people love Bennington is because it is a community, and that means we should help each other, and we all want to help each other.
Okay, any board members got any questions, Mary? Or any comments?
If you were to go down, if someone, if we were to try and approach the situation where we try and help them, which is what we should be doing, and we went down and found them and picked them up and brought them to one of these locations where they might get housing or food, or whatever it might be, what would we do then, if they refused or didn't want to, to use that help, or went right back to it? I mean, I, there's...
There's, there's nothing, but what are you going to do if they, I mean, here's a scenario, someone is ill, whether it's substance abuse, health, mental illness, whatever it might be, and they're standing outside somebody's store, which I can understand the store owner wouldn't appreciate, and so the police come and they give them a ticket, and they still stand there, and the police say leave, and they give them a ticket, and they still stand there, and the police give them another ticket, and they still stand there, because they may not know what, they may not even be able to understand at that point what's happening. So I, I take your point, there, it's possible they might refuse the assistance of whatever resources might be available, but I don't think that's any different than the ordinance, because I think they also might refuse to leave or might walk two feet away and then come right back. If it's someone that's that non-compliant, for whatever reason, I think either way, you're going to have a problem.
Okay, other board members, Tom?
You know, I haven't had a real say in this, because I was away last meeting, but I understand where you're coming from. I think we could have it in, an ordinance that's legally enforceable. I'm concerned whether it's practically enforceable, going to the point of the individual getting cited for "panhandling," quote-unquote. They're going to be cited to pay a fine, they don't have the resources. What is the, the point of this exercise? Because I think we're really just creating another level of enforcement that the police haven't got the time or the energy for, and I don't think the town does either. If this is a real significant problem, then it should be addressed with the, these safety nets being put in place. If we're going to have an ordinance, I want something that's both legally enforceable and practically enforceable. I'm not so sure this is, this is.
Thank you.
Other members? Greg?
I wasn't here last, last meeting, but I did watch you guys, and it was a rather lively debate. I'm going to take issue with a couple of things. One, I have, from what I understand, this is a fairly regular occurrence downtown. This is something that, that has gotten under the bonnet of more than just a few of the merchants, who do pay a premium to be downtown and, you know, and have rights as well.
Sure, sure.
And I've also heard it from patrons who, who don't appreciate being stopped on the street, and, you know, Americans have the right of movement as well. I don't really see it as a free speech issue. The First Amendment is really based on ideology, freedom of and freedom from religion, the right to petition the government. I don't really, you know, there's been plenty of, plenty of conversations that the Supreme Court has decided we're not protected under free speech, whether it's intimidation or harassment or things like that. You cannot legally just say anything you want. However, however, the, I don't really think this rises to that level, is what I'm, what I'm getting at. The ordinance, the way I first read it, really defined where these things can't, where nuisances can't happen and what nuisances are. To say that 10 feet from somebody's doorway, an ATM or something like that, I think really defines personal space more than anything else. There are certainly plenty of places that you could approach people, and, and I do agree that panhandling does have a history in this country. I mean, buddy, can you spare a dime is, is an American, you know, institution, and it is, and, you know, our neighbor's right to help each other out. But I am sympathetic to people who have, who've put their savings and their, you know, livelihoods on the line to try and keep a business downtown, or paying a premium to be there, and that their interests are protected as well. It's a difficult one to write. What I, what I am going to ask Stuart is, I'd like to hear, now that it's budget season, we're going to go back to the subject of a police presence downtown. We've heard it as a budget issue, we've heard it as a manpower issue, but I hear it time and time again from, from downtown residents and downtown businesses and patrons as well, that it would be nice to see an officer strolling the street once in a while. We do occasionally see them at events and things, but it's not a regular presence downtown. So I'd like to know practically from the, from our police department, what would be involved if, if we were to pursue that? I think a familiarity with who is on the street downtown, you know, who the kids are, who the merchants are, what's normal, what looks out of place, and I heard a story of, from a downtown resident, they came home and somebody was passed out in their doorway, and they asked the popcorn guy, and he said he'd been there for four hours on a Saturday afternoon. You know, neither of those scenarios works, and it's not an arrest situation, it's somebody that needs to be tended to, you know? So while I do support having some kind of, you know, legal authority to tell someone, look, this isn't the place for this, you know, I'm all sympathetic to, how do you enforce that? And if you have somebody who's really at the bottom of, of the ladder economically, you know, what do you do with them at that point? So I appreciate you make some very good points, and I think the best points I've heard so far about this, but that's where I'm at with this.
Okay, Justin, you were here, do you have any comments on it?
I wasn't. I guess I joined the party for the missing of the meeting. You know, I just think we've gotten to a point a little bit where we're just looking to over-regulate everything. Prohibition of certain things, and all instances really, doesn't ever seem to work. I don't think it's going to work in this scenario, I don't think it addresses the root problems or causes. I, I'm sympathetic to the problem, but I don't think I can support them, you know, this, this time, because I just, I don't think it's going to accomplish anything, and I think it just opens up bigger problems, you know, kind of like Tom hit on, you find somebody, they can't pay it, what do you do with them? You know, and we're looking to tax our systems even further, so I don't think it's a good thing, but I don't think it's something we can solve by just trying to legislate it away either, so.
Jim?
I said everything I just wanted to say.
Sharon?
I'm, I don't know.
We're going to ask all the citizens, I think there's all the citizens going to come.
I mean, I think, I think it's a good ordinance, I know we've had town council look at it. Maybe we should go back to the drawing board and, and just see, you know, where we can tweak it a little bit. I mean, I support it as it is, but if people don't like it, then I think we should do something.
Okay, Mary, thanks. Any other citizens that like to come up, talk? Yes, sir. Please come up here and state your name and...
How you doing? Thanks for this opportunity. My name is Jim Bork, and ma'am, hats off to you, you took the words right out of my mouth. And you're not alone on this, trust me.
Thank you, thank you.
Panhandling, what's the definition? Salvation Army, the DAV, the fire department, filling the boots on the road, people holding up signs, that's the definition of panhandling. How can you sit here and want to ban somebody for just holding up a sign and wanting a hamburger? They're not hurting anybody, especially at this time of year, it's winter. Government's cutting everybody's food stamps, the food pantries are begging for food. How can you sit here and want to support this? I don't understand you people. I mean, I know, I don't know a lot about this, but rethink it, please. They're not bothering anybody.
Any questions to this gentleman?
Well, I think that this all came out of because they are bothering people. They're bothering a lot of people, they're bothering patrons, and they're bothering merchants, and that's why the town's been asking.
So you ask them to move on. Most of them move on, some don't. Then you call the proper authorities and have them removed. Why ban and take it from eight other people?
Well, that's the, I mean, that's always the issue, when you have somebody at work that's on the phone all day, do you tell them to get off the phone, or you pass, make a new rule that says you can only use the phone three times? You know, this is the issue we're in. There are, there are people, there, from what I understand, there's two or three people that are constant offenders of, of this, and it's, and, you know, the question was, can we do anything about it without passing an ordinance to give the police, you know, to give those proper authorities the, the legal right to go up there and say something about it? And that's exactly what we're discussing.
That's what you have to discuss...
Right.
...as a board, but don't let those three ruin it for everybody else.
So how do you...
Deal with those three.
How do you deal with those three, is the question.
The proper authorities.
Which are?
Those signs.
No, hold, the thing is...
Have them removed.
Mr. Chair?
Tom?
I, you know, I don't want to belabor it, but the essence of it is, we're not trying to regulate something without giving it some due consideration, and whether this is legal, we have our town manager and the administration and our general counsel saying that it is legally appropriate. It goes to the point of whether or not this is a serious enough issue, whether we should regulate it, because those three individuals, if they're causing such uproar, right now, we have no authority to deal with them. So that's the real issue.
I'd like to say just one thing about this. Tom and Greg, with respect to the three individuals that you have talked about, I've spoken to the police department directly about these individuals, and they have been deemed... And they have been deemed, over and over again, as incompetent. And then, therefore, the charges are dropped. So, it's a waste of time and resources.
And I think that's in agreement to what Tom was saying earlier, that it's tough enough to enforce, and if you ticket them, you're really not going to be able to do anything with it anyway. There's a lot of holes in what we're trying to pass here.
See, I'm not just hung up on the enforcement part. I don't care if we collect a penny off the fine. But I look at, you know, Mary brings up a good point, you know, call, well, we're going to have a duty roster, we're going to try to call somebody on some emergency team. We've got a 911 system, we've got a police department. Where should the call go to first? And our police force, I believe, is adequately trained. I mean, they're rated number one in the state, that they could take an individual and they make evaluation on the spot. Where should this person go? If he's, you know, make an assessment, do you think he's a mental health case? Then we've got a great mental health facility up by the hospital up there, folks that handle that, treat it. Is it an alcohol abuse case? I think you brought up, Mary, on your show, maybe we ought to look at Turning Stone. Maybe they ought to go to Turning Stone or someplace we got here. But where, where does that person who's approached, and it doesn't have to be a merchant, it could be a citizen walking downtown, or it could be a visitor, where can they turn if they feel annoyed by somebody that is persistent of asking for money? And the place to me is the police department. And again, I don't care if we collect a penny off it. But my police officers or our police officers, we know them, they're good people. They know where to direct that on a case-by-case incident, whether it's three people or whether it's 10 people, whether it's an out-of-towner, if it's somebody that needs shelter for a night. You know, we've got ways that we can take people to come in here that we can put them up for a night in different ways. But where does that information flow? That's my thing of doing it. And I think Tom has hit it. You've got to have something that these people can turn to that will allow them to call the police department, call 911, and let 911, our dispatchers, put them in the right direction where they ought to go. And right now, we don't have it. And as I think, as Tom alluded to, is this is not something the seven of us sat around and said, let's have an ordinance on this. This is complaints we've got from the public. This is complaints we've got from the merchants. These are complaints we've got, yes, you can see, it doesn't specify downtown. But yeah, it does happen in a downtown area. And oh, yes, those downtown merchants pay a tax to be operating in that downtown area, more than I do out in my rural area or anybody else that doesn't live in a downtown district. So, that's where I'm coming down on this thing. But, you know, your point's well taken. And I think we're a caring community. We've shown that during Iran, we've shown that during anything, you know, we've done. Today, I was at the Veterans Day parade, the turnout of the kids and the support of the children. A lot of you people were out there today to see the support of the veterans that were over there. This is a very caring community of everybody that's here. But again, that's my feeling about why we need this. We have to have a tool that can trigger that phone call to the right place. And right now, the right place is the place that's manned 24 hours a day, and that's our police station, that's our dispatch link.
Well, I know you guys got your work cut out for you, but I think banning it altogether is just wrong for a lot of people. Thank you.
Any other, come on, Judy. Judy, please state your name for everybody.
Judy Murphy, and I live in Bennington. And I would like to also speak against this ordinance. I think it's like taking a cannon where you could use a blaster. My feeling is that, first of all, I did a survey when I heard about this ordinance, and I asked a number of people if they had had any problem. None of them, they all looked puzzled. They said, what? No, I'm downtown, I never, never had a problem. I've never had a problem, I'm downtown fairly frequently. And what would prevent someone from calling the police or 911 if they feel threatened by someone? You know, there's a law against assault or against, if someone feels endangered, they can call the police without this ordinance. And I also see it as part of the community. Obviously, we're going through tough times. There are a lot of people in town who are unemployed, there are people that are homeless. And rather than punish them, I think we need to reach out and be compassionate as a community. And there are ways of doing that. And I don't think that this ordinance is needed. I think as it stands, it's way, way too broad. And as from a civil rights point of view, and I've been active in civil rights all my life, I just don't see this. I see it as repressive, I see it as punitive toward low-income people because they are probably the ones that are going to be asking for help, or people with mental health issues, and people in poverty. And I think we have to be compassionate. There is, there are times when it doesn't hurt to give someone some help. And, and I think we all have an obligation as part of this community to reach out, and I can see Stu rolling his eyes, you're not too happy with this. But that's, I just feel it's very bad from a civil rights point of view. And I disagree with you about the First Amendment. I think that it's much broader than what your interpretation of it, Greg.
Okay. Any other questions? Stuart?
I would just like to comment on two issues that have been raised. The first, when Mary Garish talked about approaching people, talking with your friend and asking for a dollar is against the law. You have to read the paragraph in its entirety. You can't pick and choose what part of the paragraph you wish to read. And it goes on to talk about a person before, during, or after soliciting, if that conduct is intended or is likely to cause a reasonable person to fear bodily harm to oneself or to another, or damage to or loss of property or otherwise be intimidated. It's not just saying to your friend, can I have a buck? This is a situation, aggressive panhandling or aggressive solicitation is a situation where people are interfering with people's progress on the street to ask them for money. And in many cases, people are intimidated by a stranger stopping them on the street and asking them for five bucks, 10 bucks, a dollar, whatever it is. And that's what this is intended to deal with. We're not attempting to carve out anybody who asks for a dollar or asks for some help. But it's when that, that behavior becomes aggressive, and that behavior becomes constant, then it becomes an issue. And right now, we don't have a way to deal with the person.
Why couldn't you call a police officer?
You can't, because the person is not, the person is not violating any law by asking you or stopping you on the street to ask you for money.
I think that's as it should be.
It has, well, you're asking the police officer after the fact to make an interpretation of whether or not that was a threat or intimidation or assault. And this ordinance gives us the ability, on the complaint, to go to the individual who has been cited and make a determination about what was their intent. And I think that's the purpose of the ordinance here. And as to banning all solicitation, it does not do that. We specifically amended the ordinance in paragraph G, where we talk about, it is not intended to prescribe any activity permitted by the vendor's ordinance, which is another ordinance that already exists. And that goes to the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts and the Salvation Army and others who go out and solicit funds at times with approval of the town. I think the ordinance has been reviewed by council. I don't think it, it is meant to harm people in need. There are people out there who truly do need help. And if I'm approached on the street for a couple of bucks, and I feel like giving a couple of bucks, I can do that. I don't have to file a complaint. But if that's a person, if I say no, and that person stops me or puts his hand on me, and I determine that that's intimidation or threat, I want to be able to call somebody and have the police deal with this individual because he's not getting the message. And I think that's the intent here.
I maintain that you can do that anyway.
Pardon me?
I maintain that you can do that anyway.
No, I don't think, I don't think it's that clear, Judy. I don't think it's that clear. I don't think that you can. If somebody stops you on the street and says, hey, I need to talk to you, is that assault? Is that a violation of the law?
Maybe we need to have that a question here.
Or following you down the street, you know?
Well, I, I mean, council has reviewed this. It's based on an ordinance that was adopted in the city of Burlington, it's been on the books for a long, long time. And I, and I don't think it reaches the level of intimidation or rights violation that we're attempting to paint here. We're not attempting to stop somebody from asking for money. We're attempting to stop somebody from aggressive solicitation. That's the issue. When, when people step back, when they are approached, and the person does not leave them alone, or tends to follow them, or stops them at an ATM when they're trying to get money out, those are the kinds of things we're trying to address here. Not, not everything in the world that might be considered panhandling. Those kinds of things, because you can't, you...
I just think it goes too far, and I think it's repressive.
I appreciate your opinion.
Okay. Greg?
If I can say, I think when you don't define those things specifically, that's when the window for rights violations really comes in. When, when an officer arrives on a scene and does not have a clear definition of what's legal and what's not legal, then you have an interpretation on the scene. And that's when you have things like prejudices and, and, you know, spot decisions and judgments that are made on the scene. And you can have selective prosecution as a result, which is not what we're trying to get. I mean, it, this, it, when, when you look at the definition of solicitation, that's not what's being outlawed. We're just defining what solicitation is. And then in the other paragraphs, defining where it can, when what's aggressive solicitation and what's not. I don't want people to read the definition of solicitation and think that that's outlawed outright in here. It's just defining what it is. And then, and there's other, in the other paragraphs, it's telling you what kind of solicitation is aggressive solicitation and where that, and where solicitation can and can't happen. It's, and this is an amendment to an existing nuisance law. I mean, this law already exists, this is an amendment to that, to clarify to the police what they would be allowed to and not allowed to enforce.
And Judy, we're not pulling these instances...
They just already know that, and they don't, I think this law is far too broad. And I think it's, it's, I keep on hearing about three people. You don't make a law for three people.
Well, the thing is, if you make, if you have a situation that arises and three people are abusing a situation, there's a window there for more of that. And that's, that is what people are, coming to me are worried about.
Well, I just think the situation needs much more investigation as to numbers, how many, how difficult, how prevalent is this? You know, and the survey I took, admittedly, is not scientific. But I asked about 12 people, and none of them, they were puzzled, none of them had ever been, had had problems. So...
To Greg's point, though, we do want to...
What you say, such a big problem, may not be. And I think we need some statistics before we go into something as broad as this.
But we've also had actual complaints, and that's what we're, we're going on. I don't know how many complaints, but I know that...
Oh, I think that would be...
They're instant, these are things that have actually happened.
Relevant information to find out.
To Greg's point, though, we do want to fix this while it is three people. We don't want to wait until it's 30 people or 40 people, and then it becomes a much larger issue and harder to deal with at that point.
I think that's doubtful.
Until I was born and raised here, and there have always been one or two people throughout my life that have been classified as beggars. It's not something that is going to go away.
I just don't see it as something that's appealing, that it's going to catch on to masses. I just think, you know, there's some, there's some subtly things in the world that we just have to deal with, and you just can't legislate them away. And this is a problem, we're just one of those.
Okay. Other citizens that would like to speak to this, please? Please come up, state your name.
My name's Aaron Sawyer. I'm not really good at the speaking thing, so I'll do my best. I've lived in Bennington now for six years. I chose this area because I was raised in Husick Falls, and after graduation, I joined the Navy. When I ended my service, I moved to Boston and realized that a city isn't what I wanted, that I wanted the small-town feel that my dad grew up with. I wanted a place where people knew their neighbors and felt comfortable asking for help. I wanted to grow a family in a place where my neighbor could knock on the door and ask for a sugar. And I understand that this is not what you're legislating against, it's merely for point. To show my son and perhaps future offspring, God help us, that the world is still the magical place we knew as children. I worked at many of the fast-food restaurants and local establishments. I was young, unsure of myself, and angry at the world. And this alone held me back. I spun so far out of control of my own life that I slept in my car for a good three months during a Vermont winter. When I had finally come to the conclusion that the problem was me, I decided to change that. I asked for help from many of the organizations and was told I did not qualify. I, for a time, lived off the kindness of strangers in this community. People who later became friends, or people who I still recognize and understand fed me when I could not feed myself. I understand the position of the board and the better Bennington Corporation develop a view of Bennington that is essentially marketable. And nothing screams poverty more than having the impoverished line your streets. But I don't think that that's where we are now. I currently live at 311 Pleasant Street, and probably what most of you know as one of the worst streets in our town. But it's still a suburb comparative to some of the cities I've lived in. I don't own a vehicle, and I walk everywhere I go. Not once have I been stopped on the streets in Bennington to be asked for money. Blanketed, this idea makes sense. However, it's been rewritten to obviously only include those we deem unsavory. I'm not asking you to vote against it, you must vote your conscience. And I understand and applaud that. What I am asking you to understand is that the people you choose to vote against are the people you took a seat on our town's board to help defend. My argument is this. If we as a town feel that this is a problem, please put it to a town vote. The provisions that have been added are at best unconstitutional and at worst contra-constitutional. Today is Veterans Day. I will be ashamed to be both a veteran and a citizen of Bennington if we decide on a day that is supposed to celebrate the liberty and justice our armed forces have provided through grueling and sometimes life-ending activity by effectively legislating against those we still fight to protect around the world.
Any questions? Any questions, any board member? No? Okay. Any other members like, Jonah? Joanne, Jonah? Joanna, Joanne, you coming up?
Yep. I'm Joanne Erin House, and I'm the director of the Chamber of Commerce here in Bennington, Vermont. And I'd like to say a few words, first of all, to thank you all for responding to my request for a panhandling ordinance. Due to the fact that so many people were reporting to me and saying that it was a real problem, I thought it was something that our town fathers and mothers should address. So, I greatly appreciate your thoughtfulness, your due diligence, and your legal inquiries as to how to frame an ordinance that would service the people who have invested a lot of money and time and energy into this community, mainly the business people and others who work and live in the downtown area. After a lively discussion with Mary on Friday on CAT TV, for those of you who have missed it, I think we came to a relatively good idea for how to perhaps get to the bottom of this problem and create a solution that would be equitable for all concerned. Number one, we do need an ordinance. We do need something for the authorities to base answering a call for help. They need to have that authority so that they can reach into the problem and start the solution process. I understand that some people think it is overly broad. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I would like to make sure that we have a fair ordinance, and I would like to see that the Community Action Committee that Mary and I talked about be put into force so that you can go and solve the problem from both ends. If there are people out there that have mental problems and so forth, then they need to be addressed. But I don't feel they need to be addressed by the citizens on the street. Those problematic people should be addressed by the proper people who can sort out the issues and help them get better. And it's not against people who don't have money. There are many, many people in this community that do not have money, have very few resources, but they're not panhandling. They're not on the street asking other people for money. And they're not asking for money from the people, who I might say, are the ones who support most of the nonprofit organizations in this town that supply help and underwrite the resources to provide food at the food pantry and answer every call for every race, for every event that is raising money to help people because we do care. And we do want to make sure that our citizens are cared for and kept warm and fed. This is something that we all care about, and we give constantly for that purpose. They don't need to be harassed. They don't need to feel that their potential clients and customers are being scared away by a few. I feel that this is a way that having an ordinance and an organization together, working towards a joint purpose, can solve the problem rather than exasperating it or putting people against one another, or pitting groups of people against each other, which is not the case. So I just want to thank you guys for working really hard. I hope that you'll continue to evaluate this request for the ordinance and create a document that can fulfill the needs of the downtown business people and also not be overly burdensome to the people who feel compelled to be on the streets asking for money. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thanks, Joanne.
Other citizens? Jonah, you had to hand up? Jonah?
No. I'm not a voter.
Say your name, please, for everybody.
My name is Jonas Spivak. My wife and I own a business in Bennington, the Hoppet House Craft Market. We are a supporter of the Coalition for the Homeless, and we donate to the Food and Fuel Fund. And we welcome having the Coalition as a neighbor of ours on North Street. And I always made sure to make a point of calling Kendra, the prior, previous director, to discuss the situation when we were looking to save that building. So certainly, as a business, we have a strong social conscience. However, I do want to speak out today in favor of this ordinance for a number of reasons. I'd like to start off by commenting that even though begging in some form has always existed, what we're talking about today is a relatively new problem. And it really only came to my attention this summer, but I want to make it very clear, if you haven't experienced it yourself, or if your friends haven't experienced it, talk to some of the business owners downtown or people that live downtown. This has become a serious problem this year, and that's why we're here talking about it. I'm delighted that the community is coming out in such strength to discuss this issue. It's a very important issue. But I want to be clear that we're talking about this because it is a serious issue. There, it is happening out there. And people are being hurt. So it's not a question of, you know, we're making a law that we don't need because nobody's being hurt. People are being hurt. In one sense, I'll say that some of the people that are being hurt are the businesses in our downtown. Again, as, as Joanne commented, these are the same businesses that pay the taxes to the community to support those social services that are so vital for helping people that need the help that's out there. And for those that have benefited from those services, you have to understand that creating a good climate for business has to be part of the mix of what we're doing in our town so it supports everybody. We are a caring and compassionate community. And I don't think the purpose of this bylaw is to discriminate against people that have less money. That is certainly not the intent. And I would argue, over the four decades since we were kids and there were homeless people on the streets, we've made tremendous strides in providing additional services and support for those in need. But I would point out, just because something is hard doesn't mean we shouldn't try to do something about it. We've spent a tremendous amount of time and effort as a community trying to make ourselves grow, trying to make ourselves an attractive community, trying to market ourselves as a community to the outside world. And it's vitally important that we continue to do so. And not because it's fake or something that's not real. I mean, we're marketing who we are. We're authentic Vermont. And I dare say that people who make aggressive solicitations for money as a form of a business, that's not Vermont. That's not who we are as a community. That's, and that's what we're really talking about. We're not talking about people who are genuinely, genuinely in need. We're talking about some bad behavior by a relatively small group of people. And sometimes you do need a law to deal with those people, because otherwise, they'll just keep doing it. Some of this conversation made me go back and read the initial article that came out regarding this issue when they first announced it was going to come up in front of the board. And I noticed in rereading the article that the police are essentially one of the people that, in addition to the Chamber of Commerce and the BBC, the police themselves were asking for some kind of an ordinance to use as a tool to help them better be able to address those individuals who are, who are problem individuals. And one thing they did state in the article, which alleviated a concern I had at a previous meeting, was that I, my concern was, well, when we, when we approach these people, the first thing we should do, of course, is make sure that they are directed towards services or provided with support that they need. And in rereading the article, I saw that that is something that our police are currently doing. They are directing these individuals to services and support that they require. The problem is not that these services and supports don't exist. We have, as a community, come together through our tax dollars and our efforts to make those And I have to mention the First Amendment, just because it keeps coming up. It came up at the last meeting, and it came up again tonight. And I apologize, because this is a little bit off topic, but since it keeps coming up, I think it worth, is worth mentioning. One thing, just on a side note, I have to say, one thing I love about the Constitution is it's so wonderfully written and clearly written. You can tell it was written by philosophers, not by lawyers. And in fact, in the entire, the entire First Amendment is only 45 words long, and only six of them refer to freedom of speech. And three of those six words are freedom of speech. So just in a nutshell, let me mention, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion, prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech," there it is, "freedom of speech," "or of the press, or the right of people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." So we cover a lot of ground in 45 words. We've established the freedom of speech, religion, the right of assembly, and the redress of grievances in 45 words. That's truly amazing. But part of the reason they did this was because they expected us to use our common sense as we moved through, forward through the centuries. So, for example, and I have to mention a couple of specific examples, because a lot of the people that are here tonight were not here at the previous meeting, but these are specific examples of the type of bad behavior I'm talking about. One was by a local business, a local downtown resident, also works in a local business, Judy Pennick, I believe. She commented about an experience where a group of elderly women got out of their car. And, you know, this is on Main Street, they got out of their car, and they stepped out, and they were almost immediately accosted by a gentleman asking them for money. And the, I don't recall if she said whether or not they actually gave the individual money or not, but after that experience, these ladies, elderly ladies, got back in their car and drove away. Clearly, they were intimidated. And just because they didn't, hands weren't laid on them, or maybe even a voice wasn't raised, but if you're an elderly woman and a large individual approaches you, it can be intimidating. So, two things just happened. First of all, number one, I do not believe that the Freedom of Speech Clause in the First Amendment was to allow intimidation of elderly people. That's common sense. That's not the purpose of the First Amendment. And bad behavior, just because it's verbal in nature, doesn't mean it's automatically protected by the First Amendment. On a personal level, the individual who, I've, I've been approached a few times this summer, and I've never been approached in my entire life in Bennington, but I've been approached a few times this summer on Main Street. One of the individuals was, I'm about six feet tall, he was at least two inches taller than we, me, and weighed 100 pounds more than me. And I told him, no. But if I was an elderly woman, or someone a lot smaller, or, you know, I could easily see being intimidated enough to even give them money, even though I didn't want to, because that is intimidating when a large person approaches you like that. Another example we read about in the paper was someone who was panhandling ostensibly because they wanted food, but in fact, they were buying muzzleloading supplies. Or, or we've heard other testimony about they're purchasing alcohol or lottery tickets. This is the kind of bad behavior. Is the First Amendment there to protect people who want to lie? Because that's what he's doing in that case. He's lying, saying he's going to take the money for one purpose and then use it on muzzleloading supplies, or alcohol, or lottery tickets. That's not the intent of the First Amendment. The First Amendment is very simple. Really, it's, it's to protect political speech. It's to protect what was happening here tonight. And that's what's awesome about this country and our government. We have these sort of interactions. We have these sort of public meetings. That's the kind of speech that's protected. In particular, it's to protect us so we can speak against our own government, if we don't like what the government's doing. That's really the purpose of the First Amendment. I do not think, I agree with Greg, in this case, it's not really intended to prevent our community to address examples of bad behavior. It's not a First Amendment issue. I could go on further with that. There have been some specific cases where they specifically talk about commercial speech as not being protected by the First Amendment. And you could argue panhandling is a form of commercial speech, or asking people for money. Kind of sounds like a politician, but that's another story. Sorry about the attempt at levity there. So, I guess in sum, what I say is, we're not trying to address the big-picture issue about homelessness or poverty in our community. That's a bigger issue than this bylaw or anything we can accomplish tonight. What we're simply doing is accomplishing two things. One is giving the police something they've asked for, which is a tool to help them deal with these situations where there's bad behavior. And number two is protecting the rights of other people not to be harassed. And it can be intimidating, whether you're an old person, or, or, as I already said, it's, it can be intimidating. So I guess I'm running out of steam, and rather than digress, I thank you for your consideration of the issue.
Thank you, Jonah. Any other citizens out there? To the mic, even though everybody in town has you on a Facebook friend.
Tim Hunt, I'm from Bennington, and I think most people know me. I just want to give a couple of observations, and I hope I say this right, because I don't normally speak in public at all. The issue and the amendment that I see, and the observations and hearsay and so on that I've heard, okay, they, there's a whole different level. It seems to me that the police already have the laws and the tools to deal with our problems. If, if somebody is walking down the street and, and there's another person that's going to impede their progress and cause them alarm, well, that's harassment, okay? That's already illegal. We already have that law. If somebody's walking down the street and they say, hey, brother, can you spare a dime? Okay? That's not illegal, okay? It, all of this and what we just went through reminded me of Business Law 101, okay? We already discussed this stuff a long time ago. We all know it. We have the laws in the book. Why create even more of laws and an ordinance? If you look at Article 17, I think, the first thing it says, you can't play a ball, have a ball and play in the street with it. Well, obviously, now we understand that. I mean, look at North Branch Street. It's a racetrack, okay? But when I grew up on North Branch Street, it was a dirt road, and we could play on the road. But, but that's that ordinance. That's what it starts with, playing with a ball. Not panhandling, not causing harassment, or, or scaring off the tourists, of which I spent a lot of time this summer down there with the tourists, okay? I did not see it. Maybe I wasn't aware of it. I would have, now I'm aware of it, I'm going to look for it, okay? I kind of suspect I know who's doing it, okay? Yeah. Their, their, their mental abilities probably are a little bit questionable, okay? But we have laws, and we have ways to, to deal with that in a compassionate manner. You know, if they're really causing harm to themselves and other people, they shouldn't be on the street, and we've got avenues for that. And that's my basic thoughts.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Any other, John?
I spoke last-
John, introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm John Shanahan, the Director of the Better Bennington Corporation, which is a downtown organization representing the merchants. And I spoke last week to address the public and the audience, but tonight, I just want to talk with you guys. We're talking about an ordinance. We have a bicycling ordinance, we have a parking ordinance, we have a skateboard ordinance, we have a sign ordinance. We're not throwing people in jail, we're not imposing unbelievable fines. All we're asking with this ordinance is to do what we've done with the other ordinances, and that's to address a growing problem that is affecting community members. And the members we're talking about today are our downtown merchants. I don't care how many people haven't seen or been aware of this issue, it's a major issue. It's every hour, of every day, of every week. And I get complaints constantly from the merchants, which I understand, but my answer to them is, there's nothing I can do, because the police have told me there's nothing they can do, because there's no ordinance for them to take any action. Same with bicycling. We're not throwing the kids and the adults in jail who have a bike on the sidewalk. We're not going to be throwing panhandlers in jail. It'll be the same thing we do with our other, other ordinances. It's move along. It's when they, it becomes an issue, now our police department, your staff, has something to base their actions on. There is nothing a merchant can do right now. We can call the police. They won't even come, because it's, there's no reason for them, or nothing for them to back it up on. This ordinance is just to give them something to do in case it becomes an issue. If we wait, it will definitely become an issue. Yes, it is two or three people right now. I know them personally. I know the merchants personally. I know what they're spending the money on personally. So it is, but there is nothing anybody can do about it. This ordinance is just to address that issue before it becomes a major problem. The heartwarming, heartfelt stories about what we should be doing, forming groups, wonderful. We should have already been doing that, and we should do it in the future. And if there's an issue, lack of homing, homes, lack of beds, lack of food, open up your homes, provide meals. It's, this is a different story, has nothing to do with it all. That's two different subjects. Take all the action that was addressed this evening, but take the action of the Select Board in empowering your police department to have something to back up any action they need to take to protect the people, of the citizens, the tourists, and especially the merchants on Main Street who support these organizations. And if somebody needs money, we support those organizations to take care of them. If we shut down all the organizations and put everybody on the street and just ask for help, that's one thing. We have all these organizations that we support to take care of these people. They shouldn't have to be on the street fending for themselves when we already have organizations taking care of them. Black and white in my book, all we're asking you to do is empower your police department, who does want something in place for them to take action against people when they're receiving complaints.
Okay. Thank you, John. Michael? Michael, state your name, please.
Mike Beller. I find it very odd that I'm sticking up with John Shanahan, Joanne Erin House, Jonas Spivak, but I do believe they're right on this. These people are out there every day, and they're working with the business people of downtown. We have other restrictions that we do for our downtown, different laws. I'm very aware of poverty. I mean, I live on a disability check, I'm getting older, I'm in a wheelchair, I think I qualify for everybody they've talked about, but I haven't resorted to panhandling yet. But I do believe it's a fairness issue. And if I also had money to buy a store or operate a store, I wouldn't want somebody sitting in front of my store harassing my customers or everything else. And this town is very gracious with anybody that's poor or homeless. There's more things out there than you can shake a stick at to help these people. And I do believe this has an obligation to protect the businesses downtown, because without those businesses, we're all screwed, to be quite honest with you. We're not going to have a downtown, we're not going to have money for the poor, we're not going to have money for the wealthy, we're not going to have a destination place for people to come to. So I think in this instance, this one might be a little bit broad, you might be able to narrow it down. Do it to the panhandling, don't do it right now to the car, sleeping in the car and all like this. Take one problem at a time. But I do believe it's an issue of fairness. And if anyone here in this board or in this room had their life savings in a business downtown, and they said they need some help, I think it's your obligation, they vote you in too, to listen to what Joanne has said, John Shanahan, and Jonas Spivak has said. So I would revise it a little bit, tailor it down, but I would vote for something, to give the police something. And I also said last week, or the week before, you ought to have more police presence downtown, and it might nip some of this in the bud. And I know for a case, one of the guys that panhandles, and he's down to a local store that I go to three or four times a day, buying tickets, and about two months ago, he won a $500 ticket, okay? So he's, he's not dumb. He doesn't have any mental problems. And he's so smart, he took the $500 ticket and sold it to somebody for $300. You know why?
Yep.
Then he didn't have to claim the 500, because you have to go over this to the bank and put all your social security. So these people aren't quite as bad off that are down there. Now, if you've got problems with mental issues and stuff like that, there's things in place now. And this ordinance is just going to help the police get a handle on this before it gets overwhelmed in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else?
If no one else, I know Laura has spoken, I just wanted-
Mary, come to the mic, please.
I just wanted, it's Mary Garish again, and I just wanted to respond to something that Mr. Hurd pointed out, because when he was reading the definition of aggressive, he was, I thought that he implied that aggressive solicitation applied to every single prohibition in here, and it doesn't. It's only one of them that says you can't solicit in a, in an aggressive manner. The rest of them, J through, at least Q, only talk about solicitation, not aggressive solicitation. And the definition of solicitation is the one I referred to, where it, you don't have to do anything except speak, and it doesn't have to be somebody you don't know. So I just wanted to correct that. wanted to correct that.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Sir, come up, please, come to the mic, state your name.
My name is Michael Stern and I do not impugn the integrity of the board and anybody who wants to help, uh, prevent the businesses from being accosted by this form of aggressive behavior. Um, I myself have been solicited a few times and I think I know who the people are, and I find it annoying. Um, and I'm not in a position where I can just reward this behavior, so I basically ignore them or say, "No, thank you." Um, this morning, when I was out the parade, I stopped at one of your merchants and asked them about this issue, and they informed me that they had a problem with a gentleman and that person had to be told that he could not be in front of their store. So I know this is a very difficult, uh, problem. I, however, also agree with Mary that this law as currently written is very broad and could be subject to abuse. Um, and that's where I am afraid that, uh, giving more power to the police to arrest, that doesn't mean necessarily put away in jail, but to stop people, may be used in other circumstances that are, um, not as clear as some of the ones in front of us today. I think my, my purpose is it's, it's good to stand up for your rights, and that's what you're doing for the business owners. But I think it's also better to stand up for the rights for the people who are, need the help. And I think our, our system is failing these people because of, you know, they're, they're smart enough to stay out of trouble but not smart enough to not cause other people, um, damage. Um, so I, I know that you have a difficult choice ahead of you, but I would like to err on the side of helping the unfortunate people in our society rather than penalizing them. However, I also realize that the business owners are being attacked and their livelihoods are being attacked by a general, um, uh, you know, the, the problem is clear for everybody to see. So, uh, take, I think we need to take some time and, as Mary pointed out, the issue of sleeping in the car should not be, uh, attached to the panhandling. Um, but do the best you can, but try to keep in mind that there are people out there who, for one reason or another, are not capable of seeing the damage they're causing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens? Okay. This is the third meeting over a six-week period that we've been discussing this. And right from the first meeting, we've had people come up here and have allowed anybody to come speak on this who have wanted to speak, and some people more than once just wanted to speak. Uh, we've had public hearings on other issues that no one has ever showed up to even talk about. This is one that, uh, people are concerned with. I can say for myself, since the Banner article, um, I've received quite a few comments from people, mostly in, yes, we do need this ordinance, uh, for the same reason this gentleman just spoke of. He's been approached a number of times this summer, uh, here in Bennington. It's beginning to be a problem in, that we have to go there. So before I ask the board for their thoughts and see if there is a motion, Stuart, will you, we just review the, the process of a, of the ordinance if it is voted for tonight?
Yes. If, if the ordinance is approved tonight, uh, this would be circulated for your signatures. Uh, there would be a 60-day appeal period that would begin, the ordinance would not take effect until after the 60 days have lapsed. And that appeal period allows for either appeals to the board or appeals to the court or other types of activities that may, uh, move to convince the board that the ordinance is not needed or should be changed.
Okay. Are the board members, are y'all informed now on what the process is? Is there a motion in this time?
I would like to move that we table this, uh, because I have a question about law enforcement of this ordinance. Uh, I've heard a lot about the police being charged with the enforcement of this ordinance when it's passed. I haven't heard from the police. I'd like to hear from the chief to tell us that this is needed, A, and two, that it can be enforced, B, and C, that there are no other alternatives. And if I hear to my satisfaction that A, B, and C are, are, are in line, then I would support this ordinance because I think we have the, the town manager and the general counsel's opinion that it's legally enforceable.
Okay. I have a motion to table this, this motion.
Second.
Now, have a second. Any further discussion on the motion to table?
Yeah. I, I'd just like to piggyback on what Tom was saying there in that, uh, I'd also like to see how this would be enforced as well, some sort of plan from our Bennington PD. I came in, uh, completely against this to start with because I thought it would clog up our system, didn't know how, how it would be enforced. I thought we'd be fining people that couldn't pay fines, but actually, Joe, you, you made a good point saying that, uh, our PD is here to protect and serve and they do a great job for us, they are the best in the state. And, uh, I think if we have to put our trust in someone, that's who we want to put our trust in. And so if they can come up and tell us how they would want to enforce this, that would be really helpful for me. Um, and in addition, I'd like to see how they, they would like to help the people that they end up picking off the streets.
Great, John. Greg?
Uh, yeah, two things. First, I just, from the constitutional standpoint, um, I want to ensure people, what we're doing here is trying to establish justice and ensure domestic tranquility, which is outlined as the duty of Congress in the preamble of the Constitution. So, um, I want to thank, as Joe said, we did a lot of these where people do not show up. This has been really great to see people get involved. Um, we, I find, I think we're obligated by the First Amendment to have these conversations and to show meetings as citizens, so, um, thanks. Stuart, I do have a question as to where, um, Article H came from, uh, the, the sleeping in the car question. I really hadn't heard that much about that. As far as the, um, this aggressive solicitation, I've heard a lot about that, but I really haven't heard that much about that. Is there history to that that we should know about?
Yes. I mean-
And that the people should-
Article H, Article H has been in the ordinance since it was adopted years ago. We do not allow people to sleep in their vehicles on the public streets and, um, we attempted to clarify it, uh, by allowing and recognizing that some people traveling through town may, may be forced to sleep in their vehicles in a public parking lot, uh, overnight as they're trying to move on or in case there's no other opportunity for them to find suitable housing. Uh, what we're attempting to do here is clarify that there are people who are actually, uh, parking their vehicles on the street and essentially living in them, uh, and I will say this from experience, when they have other opportunities for housing, they choose to do this. And, and so those people who are truly, uh, down on their luck, out on the street, they can't find housing, there are agencies and there are people and the police will direct them to those agencies and people who can help them find a place to sleep, can put them up, can get them a meal, and can get them back on the road again if that's what they're doing, traveling through. Uh, that was once the responsibility of the town service officer. It's now become the responsibility of the agency of human services. And so those people are there and they're on call 24/7, uh, to assist people who are truly in need. What we're attempting to address here are people who choose to live in their vehicles when they have the means and the ability to live elsewhere because they simply choose that lifestyle.
And we had to use that a number of times this summer due to complaints, to include, uh, one complaint from, I believe, a church organization. They had to go for no trespass order in order to do this, and that's what the citizens have to do if, uh, if, uh, we don't have an ordinance so the police can back up, they have to go for no trespass order, which I think they did in this case. So, I know for a fact, because I got involved this summer in a couple of these where, uh, that ordinance was applicable to situations we had based on complaints. So the motion on the, on the floor right now is that, and a second is to table, uh, the, the voting on this.
I wouldn't mind hearing from the chief.
Okay. Any other discussion? So all in favor of tabling the motion? Raise your hands and that's unanimous, seven. Uh, Stuart, I'd like to table this till the 25th of November, our next meeting. Is that when our next scheduled meeting is?
Yes, it is.
And, uh, if you have the police chief available to speak to the issues you've heard from the board tonight.
Yep. Uh, I, I, I do know that the 25th agenda could be a fairly full, full agenda, but we'll get the word out that this is there and if, in fact, we decide after a meeting with you folks about the agenda that it should be pushed back an additional two weeks, we can do that.
Great. Thank you, Stuart. Okay. Next item, thank you for everybody participated.
Thank you.
Are we gonna get in mad rush, everybody leaving now? Are you gonna stay, we got a lot, a lot of things on the agenda? So let's, let's take about a five-minute recess for letting those people who want to leave, leave.
Go for a bathroom.
That were here just for the ordinance.
Go to the bathroom. The council, like, you know, the council.
The next item on the agenda is the Housing Vermont Grant closeout for the Roaring Branch Development. Who's gonna speak to this? Okay, Mike?
Uh, we've got a couple people who are gonna speak tonight. Uh, my hope is that this is hopefully a less contentious topic and less time-consuming as well. But, uh, as you know, over the past, uh, significant number of years, the town has engaged in multiple community development block grants, uh, that have funded a number of different projects, uh, throughout the community, both on the, the business side and the housing side. Uh, this is a more recent, uh, community development block grant, uh, that was given to Shire's Housing, formerly, uh, Regional Affordable Housing. Uh, and part of that grant process is that at the end of the project, they have to come and present a closeout presentation of the grant, uh, make it worn to the public so, uh, they can receive any feedback from the public as well. Uh, and so we've got two individuals here, uh, John Broderick, who's gonna speak, uh, from the Shire's Housing perspective. We also have Amy Donner, who is from Housing Vermont, uh, and she, uh, traveled down, um, from the northern section of the state to, to be with us here tonight. Uh, this project speaks to two different locations, uh, that you're probably both aware of, North Branch Street, uh, as well as Benmont Ave. Uh, and, um, uh, to give you an idea of the, the total project, I believe, and Mary, uh, or, uh, Amy was sharing with me, uh, total project cost was just under 6.5 million. Uh, the CDBG, uh, grant, uh, that we received, uh, and went to, uh, Shire's Housing in the form of a, a loan was for 650,000. Uh, that just gives you a little bit of a perspective. I'll have, uh, John Broderick come up and he can share, uh, the rest of the grant and the closeout portion along with Amy.
Thank you, John, for coming.
Thank you. My name's John Broderick. I'm the director of Shire's Housing, formerly known as RAC, Regional Affordable Housing Corporation. Two years ago today, on November 11th, 2013, we broke ground on 26-unit development, uh, North Branch Street. There was a vacant lot there for, that was vacant for many, many years, owned by Willie Morris, uh, for many, many years. And, uh, we've now constructed 14 apartments there in seven duplex buildings. On Benmont Avenue, we've completely reconstructed, uh, 12 units in three buildings that were originally built in the 1860s by the owners of the Holden Leonard Mill. So I want to thank the board for, uh, supporting our application for community development block grant funds, CDBG funds as they're known, uh, which represent about 10% of the total development cost for this development. Um, and, uh, the program requires that we come at the end, when everything's closed out, to come and do a report to see if there are any questions, to let you know how it all went. I'm happy to report that it all went very, very well, um, on time, on budget, meeting the needs that you've identified in the town plan, which you've supported. Um, so if I could, just a couple of moments of, of, a few more thank you's, which are in order. Shire's Housing, RAC, has been doing this for a number of years. This development we did in partnership with Housing Vermont, which is a statewide organization that partners with local groups in all parts of the state and has developed, developed many thousands of units of affordable housing over the years here.
John, you might want to explain to people, this is not low-income housing.
I'm gonna, you know, affordable housing is a, I've been in the business, the affordable housing business for 26 years, and it's a real, it's a term that's loaded and it has shifted a lot over the years. There are many different sorts of affordable housing. There's affordable home ownership programs, there's public housing, there's even privately-owned Section 8 housing here in town. This is affordable workforce housing. The, the resources that we got to do the construction are government resources, mostly tax credits as opposed to just cash grants. But once we get the keys, once that company turns over the keys to us and we take over, we rent it out to people who can pay the rent. Incomes are restricted, so you can't earn over a certain amount for most of the units. Everything we do is mixed income, so there are a certain number of market unit, market rate units built in that anyone can occupy. But folks don't get an ongoing rental subsidy like some of the other developments do in town here. So there's always a percentage of people that have a Section 8 voucher, which they can use with any landlord, and we certainly have a percentage of those, but, but, far from a majority, so, um-
Well, that's the point I want to make, it is working, working-class family housing at, uh, a, a large portion of it that's out there.
Since you're bringing this up, the employers that, uh, folks work for who live in these 26 units, not all of our 240 units, Plaisan, Price Chopper, Biata Nursing, Center for Relief, Living and Rehabilitation, Crescent Manor, two different landscaping businesses, Home Depot, uh, Southwest Vermont Medical Center, Macaw Graphics, Kmart, Bennington Health and Rehab, At Home Senior Care, Walmart, the Vermont Vets Home, Vichy, and Bennington School. Um, since you, since it's Veterans Day, I want to thank the three, um, veterans who live in our places and out of those 26 units, um, three are, are, have served the country that we know of because they're, they're disabled and, and pay with some sort of assistance. Want to thank also folks in the town office, uh, Dan Monks, Kevin Goodhue, Larry McLeod, Terry Morris, for really helping us shepherd all this through. It's pretty complicated to, to, to build anything these days, but doing 26 units, including buildings that were built in 1860s, where you're bringing in modern technology such as spray foam and solar hot water, it's really complicated. So thanks, all you guys, for, for, um, working with us. And even thanks to Beth and Kelly in the town office for dealing with me like every day for a whole year and for dealing with me in frantic moments, too. Want to also thank, um, people who actually got out there every day and, and worked to build this thing. In particular, local folks, um, Dave Hayden, Nick Hathaway, um, and Greg Herman. Uh, Hathaway did all the electrical work, uh, Hayden did all of the plumbing and, and heating and cooling work, um, and including the solar work, uh, and Greg Herman out of Manchester did all the excavation work. So to those guys and their teams, thank you very much. Also, thank you to Bennington House Tile, RK Miles. Bennington House Tile did all the flooring, RK Miles did the doors and windows and more. Curtis Lumber, which I know is across the border, but it's still sort of here in our economy, um, did all the panelized frame construction that we, we did. A lot of other smaller companies that we, we really did our best to use local vendors. The general contractor was Naylor &amp; Breen, they're out of Brandon. There was not a Bennington County contractor that bid on this side of, this size job, but we're really happy that most of the big subcontract work went to local, local people and local, you know, guys working, working out there. Um, want to thank the neighbors over on North Branch Street and Benmont who put up with living in a construction zone for 10 months. Um, want to report that we completed the project on time, um, 10, 10 and a half months construction time. Um, we came in on budget and I really want to thank Amy Donner for making sure that we landed this plane like very, very smoothly. Little bit of turbulence at the end, but we landed it with a 6.5 million dollar project within $200 of the, of the budgeted amount. So, um, it came off without a hitch. Um, we have 26 folks, the, the place was, uh, we got the certificate of occupancy on September 30th, 2012, and, uh, the place was 100% leased up by January 2nd, and those are difficult months for people to move. Um, I, Stu, I mentioned to you today that, that every family that, um, that got an apartment had a local address before they, before they, uh, that, on their application. It's not true. There is one family that came from out of state. They moved here because they have relatives here who own a business here and they have been employed, uh, at, two family members have been employed in three different jobs, local companies that I just read off here. We had a, um, an arrangement where people would get, people who paid rent on time for the first 11 months would get the 12th month free. The reason for that is it, because we always, in the past, have ended up giving an incentive to like the last couple of apartments in there if they were like difficult to rent. This time we said, you know, we're gonna, everybody who can, uh, who, who makes the commitment early on, we'll give them a free month's rent, but after you pay the rent 11, you know, 11 months on time. So 17 out of 26 families took advantage of that and were able to take advantage of that. These are folks you know, they're folks that you pass every day in the produce aisle at Price Chopper or, um, if, if you- Price Chopper, or if, if you're visiting a relative at the hospital, or one of the nursing homes, or they might even be someone that takes care of one of your relatives in, through one of the, the home nursing services. So I think we've, we achieved our goal of building something that's going to last, that's high-quality, that's, that's kept up well. Everybody who's in there is, is paying the rent, or if they're not, they're moving on. Folks who rent from us will know we have a lot of rules, we have credit and criminal background checks, we check with prior landlords to make sure people have paid before. I, I don't think we get a lot of complaints about any of our units throughout town. So I'm, I'm proud that my team, Pat Warner, Bernie McDonald, who are watching on TV at home, I hope, have all done a really great job. So thank you for your support, thank you for the, the staff of the town, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions, John?
No, I don't.
John, you got anything else in the future coming up in Bennington?
Yes, we do.
Do you want to just quickly mention future projects that may be happening?
Uh, well, the one that I can mention is that we, we, um, most of the buildings, or most of the units that we have are rehab of existing buildings. And the reason why we went into those buildings is because no one was going to do them. They were underwater, they were in deep, deep trouble. Well, the earliest ones that we did are now showing signs of stress and showing signs of age. So we have a 26-unit development that we're putting into the works right now. It's 17 units at Carrigan Lane, five units at One, or four units at 119 Park Street, and five units at 233 School Street. It's not going to be deep gut retrofit like Benmont Avenue, but they're going to look good outside and in, and be set up to last another, you know, well into the future.
Great, thanks, John.
Can I just make a comment? And I went to the grand opening of your Branch Street project, and I might add that they are beautiful apartments, and people should be proud to live there.
Thank you. I'm glad, people seem proud to live there because they take care of them, and I'm proud of that.
Good.
Thank you, John. Is there any official thing we need to sign for closeout of this, Michael, or is this it? Just a briefing, that's it? Okay. Thanks a lot, John.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is town funding application for the water projects under my college. Stuart?
Yes, in order to continue to move this project forward, we have, working with Jason Dolmetsch from MSK Engineering, we have an opportunity to apply for a loan from the municipal system loan program, that is a water resources-funded loan program. It's a set interest rate of 3%, actually 1% interest or 2% fee to the agency. But in order to move this forward, I do need you folks to approve the funding application. We have been assured that we are number one on the list, should this go forward, and we hope with this signature, we will then sign a contract to complete the engineering. The engineering cost, which is shown here at 66,000, is going to be rolled into the entire loan amount, so we won't actually be paying out of pocket for this money. The state will pay this funds, and a year after the project is complete, this will be rolled into the 3.5 million, 3.3 million dollar project, and will become part of an annual payment.
That will go for a bond?
Will have to be going for a bond in March.
All the board members understand what this is and what we're asking for?
I wasn't here, again, for the discussion. I was really impressed by the, the presentation, and this is a real accomplishment.
Well, it's a winner for the community, because we're going to get pushed into doing this, whether we do it or not. And here's an opportunity for us, one, to partner with some other folks, and also get this money from the, the state in this loan process, so. Do I need a motion to let you sign for it, or we have to sign for it?
Board member's signatures are required.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion?
So.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And that is unanimous. You can circulate that for signature. Okay, the Northside Drive conceptual design, and Justin, you had asked for this?
Yes.
And Dan, are you going to come up and talk about this? Or Stuart going to talk about it? Who's going to talk about it?
Yeah, just sign in one of those boxes.
I think we just provided this to the board at Justin's request, and the rest of the public, just to give you an idea of some of the work that's been done in the past on conceptual designs for improvements to Northside Drive. I apologize, the graphic that was sent out to you folks was scanned, and we couldn't get color, because it's a really large graphic. But I do have the graphic that you can actually read, if you'd like to look at it. And it is really just conceptual designs, this is just one conceptual design for improvements in Northside Drive, not to say this is the only way that it could be done.
Where's the time?
I believe it was done back in 2006.
Yeah.
2006, yeah, so quite a ways, quite a while ago, but not a lot has changed, at least with regard to the roadway. In fact, some of the places where we needed some additional road width, the buildings have been sent, pushed back a little bit with new buildings. So it's really just to give everyone an idea of what, what a, one conceptual design for that roadway could be. I know there's been a lot of discussion in the past, and it continues today, that if the state were to, that roadway, especially the drainage and some of the surface issues with that road, that it may make sense for the town to take it over, but certainly is not in a condition now where it would make sense for the town to take it over, given the huge amount of funding that would be needed to bring that infrastructure up to current standards, so.
Let me ask something. I mean, it's a good time that we look, look at this, but is there any place in your office or in the town office where this can be on the board like we did with the bypass things done? Because I'll tell you, this would be interesting for a lot of people to see. We, I get questions about, well, where are these roundabouts planned for, and this kind of stuff, and this shows that.
We can leave it right up.
Can we find a spot somewhere, we get it up, so those interested in the community can come in and look at it?
About on the, all right.
Yeah, this is, this is. You know, your comments and input is important.
And I think, just to sort of summarize what the project would be, it takes, it rids Northside Drive, that segment of Northside Drive, of all signal lights. It creates roundabouts, both large and small, at all of the major intersections down through there, and it creates a median strip in the middle of the roadway that prohibits left-hand turns. And that may be the, a bone of contention for some people, but right now, if you, if you go to any of those businesses on Northside Drive, other than the signalized intersections, and you try to get out and make a left-hand turn across traffic, you can sit for a good long time. And what this would do is force you to take a right-hand turn, move down to a roundabout, run the roundabout, and come back in the direction you desire. So it would keep traffic moving, you wouldn't have the stop-and-go situations that you have now, you wouldn't have the potential for cross-moving accidents, where traffic is crossing two lanes to try to move in the, in a direction opposite to what most of the traffic is moving. So it's, it's, as Dan says, it's a concept that goes back to 2006, it was funded by a planning grant that we received from the state of Vermont, and it's, it's really been sitting there, waiting for an opportunity. Walmart and John Levy was that first opportunity to try to address the concept, and Jonathan has embraced the concept and plans to move forward with it.
We hit it, Stuart, because left-hand turns are prohibited already. You, you can't make a left out of, out of most of these businesses.
That's impractical.
Yeah, it's very impractical. You have to go make a right, and then looking to make a left, again, to get back to going in, you know, in the opposite direction.
Well, you know, that was 2006, but changes have happened in 2013 concerning railroad track that goes behind, parallel to Northside Drive. And I'll just throw this out for folks to be thinking about, but if that all falls through the way it does, is, would the town ever, or would the planning commission ever look at making another highway there, making one-way street on Northside Drive, and then one way the other way, like many of your larger cities do now? So you've got to circle the traffic. Just something to throw out there.
It's actually something they looked at back in 2003, it's one of the options. It's interesting you bring that up.
The drainage is a, is a major issue also.
Yeah.
You know, Northside Drive, one of our most traveled thoroughfares in Benton, is probably close to one of the worst roads we have in Benton also.
Well, it is when it comes raining, when you can see it, no question about it.
Absolutely. And it's our, it's our major commercial center, and it needs to be, it needs to be up to.
It's by far the most traveled roadway in Bennington County. More traffic on that roadway, average daily trips than any other roadway by a huge margin.
I'd like to see us get this presented to our delegation at this point. You know, two weeks ago, we had a hearing here from the Vermont Transportation Board, and they're currently setting priorities for the legislature to look at the next legislative session, and they're looking for input. And I think if, you know, with all the work that's coming up on Northside Drive, I think this is a good time to put that in front of them and say, you know, we've got a concept here, we've got a lot of work going on, how many times are we going to bust open that road in the next five years? You know, we, and, and get that conversation started, because that, and that's been the impetus of my, you know, push on this, is trying, you know, I, I just hate to see a backhoe go into a freshly paved road, you know, and that's what we're looking at out there.
Well, I'm hoping for a lot of rain on Wednesday for noon, because in order to get the governor from the vets home, where he'll be with me in the morning to the welcome center, we have to go down Northside Drive, turn in front of your, your building there, your auto dealer, and then get up, that's where we can go. So that'd be a great opportunity to get the governor involved, it'll be about three inches of rain Wednesday morning.
Make sure you're in his car.
It would really, it would really connect it, you know, to the, the other half of North Bennington Road, which is in, you know, very good shape, all the way down to Kosher Drive, which we're looking to do some major improvements on pedestrian-friendly, and anything of that nature. It's, it's one section of road there in the middle that's important to our town, it's important to our community. It's a huge part of our tax base. It's just, it's, it's of high priority to get that up and up.
Yeah, and I think it's nothing short of neglect. You know, I mean, you look at that, I drove there after a downpour a few weeks ago, and it was a good half hour after the rain stopped, and, you know, waters bouncing over the roofs and collars down there. And, you know.
Is the Walmart Act 250 permit, take any of this schematic into play?
I believe they used the, the concept that was detailed here, it was presented by the Regional Commission at the Act 250 process.
Part of the application, it's part of the permit that the, that the roundabout be constructed, and I know that the developer is currently working with the adjacent property owners to try to make, to try to acquire the land necessary without having to use the state's eminent domain process, so hopefully that will go.
So that's really going to be on the ground, and that's going to be more than just a symbolic?
Yes. And there will be significant drainage improvements done as part of that project, so certainly it's a place to start.
Great.
Thanks, Dan. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Managers' report.
So, are you going to, trying to get something together with the delegation?
I think we need to, at some point. I guess what we're talking about is primarily to do the work they need to do for us to take over Northside Drive, meaning the drainage system.
Right, and, and there may be, there may be options for us to look at, and how we go about that. And I, I understand that funding at this point in time from the state, especially after what we've just gone through with the bypass, is probably, you know, something that they're not going to be looking to just hand over, but, you know, if we can come up with a way to try and work through this process with them, we just, we need to be open to opportunity and to, to do something maybe a little differently than we always have.
You know, do, do you all want to sit down with them, or do we just want to send a letter to, I mean, obviously Representative Tim Forkman represents us on the Transportation Committee, and, and Senator Bob Hartwell on the Senate. Do we just want to send those two a letter expressing our concern, that we want some legislative attention, state attention to, of the upgrades? Or do we want to actually sit down and meet with these guys?
Greg mentioned an organization that was looking.
Well, yeah, the, the Vermont Transportation Board is a, a board that answers to the legislature when it's budget time, you know, and they've held a series of hearings, and I'm going to talk about this a little later, around the state, and this is one of the things they were saying, is, you know, this is the time to get these things on. I've talked to Senator Dick Sears about this as well, and his, his recommendation was to get everybody on board and get something in front of them that, that they can put their hands on.
I mean, I think if we make them aware that we've got the major roundabout project that's going to happen there anyway, and if we can, if there's any way that we can partner with them so it can be done as one project, that would be super. Probably won't happen, but it would be nice.
We just need to make sure the right people know that this is on our agenda.
So why don't we start with, why don't we start with sending a letter, both Senator Hartwell and Representative Forkman, refer to the 2006 conceptual plan that we have that includes the roundabouts, that we can make available for them to see and take back to their committees?
We can do that, we can, we can send that letter to the entire Bennington County delegation.
All right.
That's a good idea.
Let's do that, and make the copies of the, you know, that, that we've studied this, we've looked at things we're doing, here's the things we need the state to do.
Will do.
Okay. Okay. Managers' report.
I don't have any action items tonight. I was asked to, using this platform, to remind everyone that tomorrow at 5:00 is the last day to pay your real estate taxes to the town of Bennington, and in spite of the continuing notice in the banner, which claims it's 205 Union Street, it's actually 205 South Street. We've been unable to get that corrected, although we have assurances.
There was a little correction in the other day, but it was just a little tiny paragraph up at the top of a column.
It appeared again this morning as 205 Union.
Did it? I didn't see the paper today.
But nonetheless, please pay as much as you can, because there is an 8% penalty on all late payments, and that penalty will be assessed as of 8:00 AM Wednesday morning.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Tom, we'll start with you, other business?
No, I think we've covered a lot tonight.
Okay, Greg?
I do have a couple of things, going back to the Transportation Board. For those of you who weren't able to attend, or didn't hear about it, the Vermont Transportation Board was here a few weeks ago. Last week, the subject of sidewalks came back up, so I wanted to just respond to that. I did discuss with them the state version of the sidewalks, which I, we've taught, we've heard from our, our town management, as well as pedestrians, that there's a different design the state uses to put a sidewalk together that is less hospitable to people who are in chairs, or with walkers, or sliders, or canes, or anything like that. It has a bigger gap. That was news to them, they were going to take a look at that, and, you know, but also, if you go, if you go onto the website, you can just do a search for Vermont Transportation Board, they have a place there for input, and they're gathering input during the month of November, so if you have things that are on your mind, you want to talk to them about, you can send them a direct email about those things. Also, in that conversation, it just, I was watching on television, and it struck me that as, as the board and management talks about budget year 2015, a lot of people may not realize that that starts in July 14. So it's not that far away. So when we say, you know, that'll be in the, the year 15 budget, that is what gets voted on in March of 14, and starts in, in July of 14. So that, that, we, we didn't represent that, I think we may not have explained it at length. We talk about that all the time, and, and I don't think we realize, people don't know what we're talking about. That is it.
Okay.
Thank you. Happy Veterans Day, and thank you to the veterans.
John?
I'm all set.
Justin?
All set.
Jim? Sure.
I just want to remind everybody that we do have a meeting tomorrow night at 5:30 at the Career Development Center with the school boards and the town select board to do a joint work session for budgets.
Okay.
And then on Wednesday morning at 8:00, we have a meeting at the veterans home with the school boards also, the select board, school board.
Okay.
Okay.
Stuart Interpacket, was the Fuller Road property, that road, that road project, you got on here, this is exploratory. Explain exploratory.
Well, what we did was, we've been approached by one of, one of the farmers that is looking for secondary access off of the Middle Pownell Road to lands to the west, rather than having to go all the way down into Pownell, or all the way down into Route 9, in order to move to lands that he farms throughout the region. So what we decided to do is, we've put together an estimate that will be included in the budget discussion, as to what it would cost to rebuild that roadway. It's now currently a trail for the middle portion of the road. And we notified via that letter all of the adjoining property owners, to let them know that this was out there. So this is exploratory. We'll talk about it more during the budget process. If the board decides that it wants to include the money in the budget to move forward with, with this project, it would then require a public hearing with notice to all of the adjoiningers, in a process called reopening and laying out of a highway.
Right.
Because the highway was discontinued and turned to a trail, we have to formally go through the process to reopen it. And that would give everyone who has adjoining property and has concerns about the use of the property, or how it might affect their property, they would have an opportunity at the budget process time to talk about it. They would also have a, a second opportunity, should the board decide to move forward.
Okay, and the reason I bring that up is I've already got calls. For the new board members, this is not the first time we've looked at this, this came up a couple of years ago, and at that point in time, we took up a couple of years ago, and at that point in time, we took no action, as I recall.
That's correct.
I've already received calls from recipients of this letter, so I just want to make sure when you get the calls, and I'm sure you're all going to, you just heard from Stuart how... What the process is, okay? So, budget time is when we're really going to look at it, but if you haven't... If you're not familiar with that road, you ought to drive down it and see it.
I have.
Yeah, probably on your bicycle.
I thought it went through, it didn't.
It doesn't, no.
You're on my bike.
It is a trail. Okay, we'll put that aside. I want to read a letter that's in our packet to the public. "United States Senate, Washington DC, dated 29 October 2013. Dear Mr. Hurd, Stuart, congratulations to the town of Bennington for receiving awards from the New England Water Works Association, the New England Developers Association, and Efficiency Vermont Energy's Leadership Challenge. The obstacles overcome following Tropical Storm Irene, the successful implementation of municipal website, and the reduction of electrical usage represents a true strength and resilience of the Bennington community. Keep up the good work. Sincerely, signed, Patrick J. Leahy, Senator President, pro tem of the Senate." I think that's one more indication of the things that our town staff and everyone's working together, our community working together, to make sure that Bennington stays on the cutting edge of the great things that the state wants us all to do, so I'll put that aside. Congratulations to the staff. We have a need to go into executive session for townwide housing loan, and, yeah, for townwide housing loans.
Stu, and the parking ban for winter parking is... Starts...
It's November 15th, I believe.
So, it starts this week?
Couple days away.
This Friday, so just a reminder not to park in the street overnight.
And we'll issue warnings initially, but...